The Tuesday, May 3rd, 2016 Eden Prairie City Council meeting is now called to order. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Just a note about open podium. It's an invitation to all of you or anyone else listening out at home, our audience, that open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government before each council meeting, typically the first and third Tuesday of each month, from 6:30 to 6:55 PM in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at (952) 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office. Tonight we have two proclamation presentations. The first presentation is the Tour de Tanca presentation. Jenny Baderka. Baderka, did I say that?
Okay, first and thank you.
Thank you. Well, this could be a rowdy meeting. Thank you. Just one time. Okay. All right. You, I don't want to take all the fun. You all can. Yep, okay. Go ahead, Brad. I know you want to.
Show restraint.
I'll wait till after.
And we'll just switch over just by advancing. There we go. All right. Well, good evening, council members. My name is Jenny Baderka. I'm the coordinator for youth and adult programs with Minnetoka Community Ed. And I am thrilled to be here this evening to share with you a little bit about Tour de Tanca. You've seen us before at many meetings for many years. We're hosting our 11th event this year. Really excited about that and some changes will be in Eden Prairie a little bit more this year than we have in the past. So just want to share some updates and information about the future event. Whoops. A little recap about 2015. We had six different distances for our ride and most popular being the 49 Mile and followed closely behind by the 100 Mile Ride. So lots of great options for families through more serious riders interested in doing a century. And as you can see, since 2006, our registrations have continued to grow. Last year, we had nearly 3,500 participants in the ride. Talking about where these participants come from, 239 different communities, 36 counties in Minnesota, 24 states, and actually four countries. So a nice wide draw for the event. And we do have a number of riders who've participated in every event that we've held. And last year, that number was 74 people. So we're hoping they'll all be back with us this year as well. And we like to look at our top participating communities. So you can see Eden Prairie is number five on the list. So that's very strong participation. And it looks like we had 16 more participants from this city than we had the previous year. This is just a little bit of a bigger look, the top 40. And some interesting demographic information. Females, our largest participating group, are age 40 to 49, and males, age 50 to 59. And in terms of ride popularity, females participated most in our 28 Mile Ride and males most in the 100 Mile Ride. As you know, we partner with the ICA Food Shelf to support them through our efforts. And to date, we have raised over $40,000 to support them. So just really proud of that and the great opportunity we have to share their important mission and help fundraise for them. And as you see, these are the cities we travel through for our ride this year. And we will be again in Eden Prairie. Very important is all the police fire safety support that we receive for Tour de Tanca. And we've been working with Eden Prairie Police Department and have been so thrilled with how accommodating and helpful they've been. And we're just really excited to be spending more miles here in your city this summer. There are seven distances that our participants can choose from this year, ranging from 15 to 100. And this is a nice big map kind of showing where we're going around the metro. And along the way, we have a lot of rest stops for participants to stop, have some refreshments and share community with their fellow riders. So we will be in Eden Prairie again this year for that. And just very thankful for some great sponsors that we've had continuing to support us through the years, some new and some returning. This is our participant shirt that you'll see all around the community. And we certainly encourage anyone who's interested to ride to visit our website. And we've got a nice description of each of the miles, the mileage distances, what kind of experience you'll have, whether it'll be more trails or paved. And so great options for the rides. But if you're not interested to do that, you could certainly also volunteer. So we have a lot of great opportunities ranging from just a few hours to we could certainly keep you busy for the whole day doing fun activities with us. So you can visit our website, tourdetanca.org, to learn more about that. And just wanted to share a few photos from our event last year. We had a beautiful day for a ride. And again, the date for our event next year, or this year, is August 6th. And we hope to see you there. Are there any questions I can answer for the group?
Questions? Jenny, thank you.
Hopefully you have a nice day.
Yes, we're hoping. Fingers crossed.
It's a great event. Thanks for sponsoring it.
Yeah.
Appreciate our sister city.
We appreciate all your support. We could not do it without all the wonderful communities that help support us. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Jen.
Have a great night.
So we have one more presentation, and that's something we're really excited about because one could argue we do a lot of great things as a city, but the one thing that probably is our legacy or marks us the most is our budget. It's the one part of a council, I think, that is who we are. And so when we get these audit reports back saying what a great job our city's doing, our finance department, the city council, second hand through all those people, it's really wonderful. So we have a report given by Chris Knoppich with Clifton Larson Allen. I'll get it. All right. So thank you. Welcome. And the floor is yours.
Good evening, council. And as you mentioned, I'm here to present the 2015 audit report for this city and just a brief presentation here. As we go, please feel free to stop me with questions as we go if you want. The very first slide that we have here, just a real brief overview of who the audit team was this year, a lot of returning staff this year, but we also had a nice layer of younger staff in there. The city finance department kept up with a small army of staff we had on site here for the week. As far as the overall audit results go for the city, the best thing that is out there, the city had an unmodified opinion this year. That's a clean audit opinion. That's the best the city can do. We had no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies in internal controls. We did have one legal compliance item that we did identify this year, which was more just a housekeeping item on some of the contract compliance, but something that's very easily correctable going forward. And then there is a separate required communication letter that the council will receive. Very boilerplate there, so I'm not going to spend any time going over that at this meeting. As far as some overall financial reports for the city, the general fund for the city, we had revenues were over budget this year by about $1 million and a half, which is very positive. It's about 3.6%. The largest driver of that was building the permits and fees and then also intergovernmental. So some of those grants that the city gets related to mainly construction. And then also with police and fire aid that go in there as well. And then as far as the expenditures go, the big thing there is the city was under budget ever slightly this year. The two main departments that were under budget were both the administration department and public works there. But overall, the city was able to add 551,000 to fund balance at the end of the year in the general fund. Very positive there. And the other positive thing there is the city remains in compliance with the fund balance policy that the city does have in place as well. As far as the enterprise funds go this year, the revenues in the water fund did decrease this year a little bit, and the biggest driver behind that is usage decreased more than what the rate increase was. However, you are getting a little bit closer to what your cash reserve goal is in there, and you did have positive cash results from operations as well. As far as the sewer fund goes, the revenues did increase there, but that was the other side there. Your usage decreased a little bit, but your rate increase outpaced the decrease in the usage there. And you are meeting your cash reserve goal in the sewer fund as well, which is very positive. As far as the storm drainage fund goes, the big thing there is revenues increased 13.9%, which was pretty much in line with the rate increase that the city enacted for 2015. And the other thing there that's very positive is it might look negative on here because the fund does have negative cash, but the negative cash number is significantly better than what it was last year. Last year, that negative cash number was over $800,000. So you are making very positive strides there. And there is that expectation that there will be some positive results in the next year or two in that fund. As far as the liquor operations go for the city, there was a decrease this year. It's a little over $900,000 or about 7.6%. However, the positive piece there is that the city was able to still contribute $800,000 to the capital improvement maintenance fund. And you are maintaining very strong gross profit margins in there even with the decrease in revenues for the fund. So it's very positive there, and the city is still above the seven county metro average for the gross profit percentage a little bit. As far as some of the overall market values and some of the more demographic type information for the city, there was a, the city is about $485 million over what the market values were in 2006 here, if we have a 10-year comparison. From 2014 to 15, there was a $451 million increase in market value for the city. And for 2016, the big peak there is the city is still continuing to make some strides towards that 2009 peak year out there. But you're still under for 15, but you're making continued progress in 16 towards closing that gap again. As far as the tax capacity and tax rates go for the city, the big thing here is there is an inverse relationship between what the tax rates and what the tax capacity is for the city. There was an increase in tax capacity over the prior year. And the other positive thing here is that your tax rate is continuing to decrease a little bit this year. The biggest driver in what the city can control is the city's tax rate. And you have been maintaining that and actually decreasing it a little bit. This next slide is actually a really good representation of that, comparing the city not only from 14 to 15, but then also looking at the seven county metro area, plus also the statewide as well. As you can see, the city of Eden Prairie is quite a bit lower than most of the other cities, not only in the metro, but the state as a whole. Very positive there. And as I said, the one thing that the city can control is its own tax rate. The county and all of the special districts, the school districts, they're out of your control. So the one thing that the city has been able to do is maintain that tax rate, which is very positive. As far as some, just brief, look at some brief per capita information, the revenues per capita this year, they are up about $160 per capita. But really, the big driver in that is, you'll see on there, a very significant increase in special assessments, and then also the other category, which are all primarily capital related. So it's Shady Oak Road. Those are your big drivers in there. So it is a little bit one-time skewed because of some of those one-time payments in there, but they are in there. And also, between the workshop and this meeting, I was able to look at some information regarding local government aid. And that is a, it is a big driver in that number as far as what the city uses for operations compared to other cities as well. So that information is available, so I can get more information on that for next year's meeting as well. And then as far as expenditures per capita go, the big thing here is that year over year, the city is very consistent. There was some slight increases, some slight decreases, but nothing too drastic. When you look at the statewide average for the population category that Eden Prairie falls into, the items that the city has more dollars per capita spent in would just be your police, your fire, so public safety, so something vital, community development. It's those important things that are out there. The other big driver that's out there over the last couple of years is the capital lay construction projects. The city has expended significant resources in that in the last couple of years. It's construction, it's the aquatic center, it's all of those things that are going to be providing better services for the community in the future. And then just real brief financial highlights out of this is the city is going to be in compliance with all the state reporting requirements that are coming up. They have June 30 deadlines for not only submitting to the Government Finance Officers Association, also the State Auditors Office as a whole. That'll be all submitted before the June 30 deadline. The city continues to maintain a positive AAA bond rating. Very few cities in Minnesota obtain that rating, so it's very positive there. And then also, last year, the city did receive their certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association, continuing that same process since 1990. So very positive there. And then real briefly, just a couple of emerging standards that are going to be coming out over the next few years. The most significant one there is going to be the other post-employment benefits, but we're still out a couple of years from that. The standards applicable for the 123116 audit, there are a couple minor ones, but the big one with fair value, Minnesota statute restricts what cities can invest in, so there's not going to be anything real significant there. And then tax abatement, that's not real prevalent to where it would require disclosure or anything like that in a financial statement. So the big one coming out is still a couple of years away with post-employment benefits. But outside of that, I just want to express our gratitude towards the city staff, the finance department, very accommodating. Like I said, we had a small army of auditors in here, and they were able to keep up with us. We moved the audit timeframe up a few weeks this year. They were more than prepared, so it was a very positive audit experience. And overall, clean audit opinion, one minor legal compliance item to clean up some housekeeping things going forward, but overall, very positive results. I have any questions for anybody?
Questions, anyone? Chris, thank you. This is always good news. It's not that we look forward to audit reports, but it's always nice when it's a positive. So we do need a motion?
I would move to accept the 2015 comprehensive annual financial report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments to make?
My only comment would be that thank you for Chris and the team, and thanks to our great staff, Sue Kachiver and the rest. They did a great job, again, as usual. We get to expect that, and I don't know where you have to go from here because you've always gotten an award, so it's kind of hard to go up from there, but you're doing a great job, so thank you.
Thanks, Brad. That's true. We take our great staff for granted, and when we get this kind of report, it's like, yeah, we've had this now for, say, 1990? Well, that would be 26 or something, whatever, but thank you. We should not take you for granted. This is great news. So there is a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Thanks again, Chris. This was wonderful this evening. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the evening. Let me just ask if there are any items initially here that you would like to either add or question, anything on the agenda, anyone would like to add to council member reports? And I have one, but Mr. Getcho, go ahead. Well, I had the Rick first name.
Became the city attorney for a second.
Mr. Getcho, go ahead.
We do have an item to subtract, mayor and council, the public hearing on the Senior Living Project. The project proponent needs additional time to make changes to their plan. So we request that the public hearing actually not even be held, and this item may come back either even through the planning commission, depending on what changes are made to this project, or at least another scheduled public hearing at an undetermined date for this project. So when you approve the agenda, we would ask that you subtract item A. Because a public hearing had been noticed in the paper and notices had been sent out, we were able to get notices out in advance to let people know that this one, this public hearing wouldn't be held tonight.
So this doesn't even require a motion for a continuance or anything? This is just off the agenda?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect. I just had one fast item to add under council member reports regarding Minnesota River erosion. So I'll address that when we get to that point. So let's see. Is there a motion then to approve the agenda as we stated?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Let's move then to going through the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the goal-setting workshop?
Move approval?
Second.
Great. I was expecting someone to say it off. I assume the minutes will reflect exactly what's on the agenda here. So all those in favor of accepting the approved minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? How about the council workshop held Tuesday, April 5th, 2016?
Move approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then the third, the city council meeting held Tuesday, April 5th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any items to question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. Let's move to the consent calendar and a little bit of a change here. If we could remove item E and deal with it separately because of my employment with United Health Group, which owns Optum. So if we could have a motion to approve items A through...
V.
V, absent item E.
So moved.
Second.
Great. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's...
Just one quick comment on that. I noticed on item V is the resolution supporting appointment of Peter Iverson to the Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District Board of Managers. And I noticed he's out in the audience today, and so I'd just like to thank him for being willing to volunteer and put forward his time to that. It's a very important issue to the city, and the watershed district leadership is critical. And so we thank you for your time and your willing, being willing to serve.
Thanks, Brad. And just to note also that we typically in the past have not, as a council, put forth, any individual, one of us could have put forth names at any time to the county commission, but this is one of the first times I can remember, if not the first, that we as a council have sent in a resolution with a name attached. So we hope that they will recognize and honor the significance of that, and we wish you the best. So now we have to deal with item E. So it's the Optum PUD amendment, and I'm going to abstain, but I will still lead this process at the moment. So is there a motion to approve item E?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then aye abstain. So we have no public hearings. Let's move to payment of claims. Is there a motion to approve the payment of claims as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Acting Mayor Case?
Aye. So moving down to reports of council members. I had the opportunity to actually tour what's, to Eden Prairie natives, they refer to as the Bottoms Area. So if you go south of Lines Tap, down into literally the Bottoms Area by the river there, it's basically the area between Grass and Rice Lake. And we have a tour that the Historical Society is giving with the two trolley cars to follow in the footsteps, basically, of the novel One Stayed at Welcome by Maude Hart Lovelace. And in effort to show historical places from the book, the trolley's going to go down and stop at several places, but will stop down in the Bottoms Area because the original battle in 1857 between, at the time, what was referred to as the Sioux and the Chepewa occurred right there. It's the last battle between those two great tribal nations occurred May 28th, 1857. And then there were some other historical features. There used to be a Native American encampment up through the 1960s in that area. At any rate, Seaver Peterson was our guide. He's an amazing guy. But as we walked the river, he was pointing out that it literally was 50 feet fur, in other words, he roded 50 feet into the bank in his lifetime, at least in certain areas. And continuing, his thought is that eventually it will erode back to what is now the creek outflowing from grass to rice, and then who knows then, does it keep re-roading back? So my only question is this, and not for tonight's conversation, but could we have Robert, Leslie, others, just check back in with us as a council? This is not the danger of the embankment in other areas down toward the old town of Hennepin, but the danger here is really more long-term for that next generation of Eden Prairie people in 19, or sorry, the 2050s, 60s, 70s on down the way. Is there a problem? And then if there is, and this someday becomes U.S. Fish and Wildlife land, was there something we could have or should have been advocating for grant money way back in 2016? Is my only thought, and Seaver's and other people that know this area well. So I just thought, let's get some, another set of eyes down there and maybe get back to us on what you see going on and if there really is a concern. I don't know if anyone else wants to add anything, but I was wonderfully intrigued by the tour, and Seaver would love any of you to go down at any time, and he'll show you all the history that's down there too as well.
Sounds interesting.
Is he leading the, and this was the tour that you took on...
So the tour, Kathy, my wife, and I, she will lead one of the trolleys and I will lead the other. It's on May, okay, now my wife is listening to this and she's going, don't mess up the date. I have no idea. Call my wife. Seriously. It's on some weekend in May. But we were going down to the Bottoms Area to get the information from Seaver, and he will speak at that tour.
Is it advertised, Ron? Well, here we go.
I should have found out. My point tonight was the river erosion, but I will definitely do my homework more next time on other aspects to this. Thank you so much. Call my wife.
Maybe the city could put out when that's going to happen and what's happening in Eden Prairie.
On the website.
Save your wife a lot of calls.
I believe anyone is welcome, but I also believe that it's connected deeply to the Maude Hart Lovelace One Stayed at Welcome book clubs that have been, you know, going on this last year. And for those of you that know of Maude Hart Lovelace, she wrote this novel with her husband in the 1930s, and it is, from start to finish, very much about Eden Prairie. I mean, the characters are made up, but it's very much the Cummins Girl House. The main character in the book has an apple orchard. You know, it's just, it's very much the Cummins Girl experience. So it's rich in Eden Prairie history.
And a beloved author.
And she's a well-renowned and awarded author as well, yes. All right. Thank you. So we'll now move to the report of Public Works Director, Mr. Ellis, Policy for Vegetation Management.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Case and city council members. So attached to tonight's agenda is a policy for vegetation management within the right-of-way, trail, drainage, and utility easement. So essentially, property the city has an interest in. And really, the purpose of this policy is just to ensure that users of the right-of-way, which would include people on our roadways, on our trails, on our sidewalks, and also our maintenance, utility maintenance crews, don't have undue damage or interference from overgrown trees and bushes. So the policy establishes a set of standards the city would consider when we go out and prune, remove, trim vegetation. For example, standard might be maintaining a 16-foot clearance above the road that's free of vegetation, and that allows our plow trucks, our garbage trucks, our buses, moving vans, delivery vehicles, any number of maintenance-type equipment to actually safely travel our city as they're doing the maintenance on the roadways. In similar fashion, maintaining 10 feet of clearance above our trail. So trail users and the maintenance equipment that maintains those trails don't get damaged by overgrown trees. Some of the other standards that are included is just when we go out into a neighborhood, notifying that neighborhood well in advance of our crews arriving, letting them know what we're doing, give them an opportunity to trim their own trees. That would save the city some effort. Also, letting them know that this is a service provided by the city to the Eden Prairie residents free of charge. A lot of communities don't do that. They charge residents for that service. We're not proposing to do that in this case. We've always done that as a service. And then also, when we are going to trim a specific tree, a follow-up notice that, hey, we're going to be trimming this tree. It'll be this limb because it's interfering with the roadway, just so that... We're not proposing to do that in this case, we've always done that as a service. And then also, when we are going to trim a specific tree, a follow-up notice that, hey, we're going to be trimming this tree, it'll be this limb because it's interfering with the roadway, just so that they understand before we do the cuts exactly what we'll be doing to the trees. Some of the reasons we might prune or remove trees, of course, if a tree's fallen on a roadway or across a trail or a sidewalk, we'd want to have that removed. Limbs that interfere, like I said, with plow trucks, street sweepers, school buses, and the like. Could be vegetation that's blocking sightlines at an intersection, so making sure that vehicles that are approaching have some window that they can see through vegetation to see if there's any pedestrians coming or other vehicles approaching. And then also, sometimes it goes unseen, but a lot of our utilities are in the right-of-way, fire hydrants, and people in the past have planted trees right next to them, and we actually even have one fire hydrant that has a tree that's growing into it. So making sure that those hydrants are available when they're needed. So if we need to trim a tree or even remove a tree, we would do that in that situation. And then, of course, any tree that's been deemed hazardous by our city foresters is another reason we might want to remove a tree. So as I mentioned, this is done at no cost to the property owner, it's a service the city provides. We would haul away that tree, we wouldn't leave it in their front yard for them to dispose of, we would take care of all of that. And the last comment that I'll have is, really, this policy would formalize what our practices have been for years, and we think it strikes a good balance between allowing the proper use of the right-of-way and promoting healthy tree growth in the city. And we think it works well, very few complaints, issues that arise. This will simply put that policy in writing and make it official, so.
If a resident did not want a tree that was on their property to be cut, and yet it was, well, if it's hanging over onto right-of-way, we have a legal right to cut right down the line at the very least, but if it's blocking somehow the sight of line, sight vision for a road, talk to me about how we would exercise that control and also politically be doing it appropriately, so people understand what's going on.
So maybe walk you through a process, because quite frankly, we touch every road in Eden Prairie through our street maintenance program on some rotation. It might be every nine years, every road in Eden Prairie has our maintenance equipment on it. So we like to get out ahead of those seal coats and overlay projects, and do the tree trimming a year in advance, so that there's no problems with the maintenance equipment coming through. The way this would work is, that winter, or maybe perhaps the fall before that project, we would let the neighborhood know, mass mailing goes out, we're going to be doing tree trimming, because we have maintenance projects coming up, give them an opportunity to trim it, you know, explain what our standard is. Then we actually, a few weeks later, maybe a few months later, we'll come into the neighborhood and we'll do a house-by-house assessment. Before we do any cuts, if a tree does need to be trimmed, we'll put a door hanger on their door explaining the tree that has the yellow ribbon on it, that's the limb that is causing the problem, we'd like to have it removed again. They can have the opportunity to do it themselves, hire their own arborist. If after a certain number of days we go out there, it hasn't been done, we would trim it, only what's on the right-of-way. So if the tree's in private property, but the limb hangs out over the roadway, we would trim it at the road. Now what we'd like to do is if the property owner grants us permission in writing, and we leave them a right-of-entry form, we'll trim it back to the trunk of the tree, because that's the healthiest place to cut the tree. And if we can make it look even by shaping the tree, we would do that. I mean, at the end of the day, that's our goal. However, if the property owner says, "You're not coming on our property," we won't grant you the right-of-entry, we'll just cut at the right-of-way, right-of-way line. So it really depends, you know, how involved or cooperative a property owner would be with us, but our goal is to promote healthy tree, but also protect the right-of-way.
No, it sounds really appropriate and respectful, so thank you. Any other questions before we have a motion?
No.
Could I have a motion, please?
Yes. I move to adopt the policy for vegetation management within the right-of-way and drainage, utility, or trail easements.
Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this motion topic? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're down to the end of the meeting here, unless someone else has something to add. So let's, go ahead, and I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Really quick, Mayor Case, councilmate, a little, sorry about that. A little bit of the research we did tells us that the trolley tour event would take place on May 21st.
May 21st? Do we have a time on that?
Has contacted Kathy Case.
I know that we're meeting at the Cummins Grill House, I believe at 1:00. Call Kathy Case. Thank you, Mr. Getcho. So, let's have a motion to adjourn.
I would move to adjourn the city council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Good job.